Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the meeting to order. May I have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Elliott.
Here.
Councilmember Garcia.
Here.
Councilmember Fitz Henry.
Here.
Councilmember Sandal.
Here.
Mayor Guttell.
Here. So, there's no one for the open forum. Would everybody please stand and join us with the pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, I'll ask the city council's approval of the minutes of the regular city council meeting of March 26, 2013.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
The minutes are approved. We have several really nice presentations coming up, so I'm really excited about this. First on the docket is a presentation by Mira, and they are going to come up and give us a little gist of what Mira does. I think you'd be really surprised some of the great nonprofits that we have here in Richfield. Thank you, ladies, for coming. Please all introduce yourselves and speak into the mic. You'll have to turn that mic.
It's como vamos a comenzar. Buenas noches. Mi nombre es Jackie Farrell, y soy la presidenta del consejo directivo de aquí de Richfield. Este año estamos celebrando nuestros diez años de servicio a la comunidad.
Just a question. Can people see the PowerPoint or leave?
Well, they can.
Okay, gracias.
Sirviendo a la comunidad. Desde sus inicios, Mira ha servido a más de 10,000 personas. El 90% son familias latinas de bajos ingresos, con un aumento en familias de distinto origen racial o étnico.
Nuestro objetivo es contribuir a la integración de todas las culturas en nuestra comunidad.
Hang on a second. Hang on a second. Excuse me, I'm sorry. Kim Hulley, Richfield resident for 15 years, Mira Board Secretary. You're probably all as confused by now as I am living in Richfield, knowing that 20% of our residents are now of Latino descent. Mira is celebrating 10 years of providing a bridge of resources for these immigrant families. And celebrating, we are, very proud to tell you that we are here tonight to provide, to tell you that we've provided nearly 10,000 people, 90% of them low-income families, with resources across the board covering all ethnic backgrounds. Our Mira Board, our Mira Board of Directors consists of Jacqueline Montero Farrell, our Chair, Rosa Rubio Escoba, our Vice Chair, Kim Hulley, our Secretary. I'm Kathy Louie, Treasurer. We also have Barbara J. Benner and Hugo Montero. Our honorary member is Mayor Debbie Guttell. Some of the current activities that Richfield is providing to the immigrant community here in Richfield is information resources, parenting skills, health and nutrition classes, English as a second language class, technology classes, and referrals such as legal, counseling, financial, health, and housing resources. In 2012, the city granted Mira $11,625, which helped us provide for the following numbers of people and classes and other resources and referrals. As you can see, quite an impressive number of residents that we have touched.
We supplemented the Richfield City money with other grants from all these generous donors and also all these agencies that have been supporting us to serve the community.
And we're gonna go through, we are not gonna go through all of them since you can see who they are, but they've been supporting Mira for many years, the same as the city of Richfield. And with all this support, you're probably wondering why we're here and what are our plans for the future. And we're very excited to announce that we have a new executive director and program coordinator. His name is Franklin Briseño. He comes from La Conexión de las Americas. And with his vision, we're very excited about our new programs. We're gonna keep with our current programming of the classes that we showed before, but we're gonna start a program that is targeting life skills development. And it's gonna start with sewing program, sewing classes, that's gonna move into job placement. And we already have 10 moms sign up for this program. We're gonna have a citizenship program. We're gonna do financial education, including tax preparation. And these are programs that, as you saw before, we had been offering before, but how Mira used to work is bringing other agencies to our center. And these agencies were offering the services. So, Mira pretty much was like a front door for these agencies so they could offer their services and contact with our community. So, the idea now is that Mira will be the one providing these services. We would do training and hopefully, or hope with all this is that we'll be attracting funding directly for Mira. So, this is some of the plans that we have in the hope that we can be a sustainable entity in Richfield. We're here to stay, and we hope we can count with your support. We believe that together we have been making a difference. We are making a difference, and we wanna keep making a difference. So, we hope we can count on the city's support for the coming years.
Our ask to you this evening, Mayor Guttell, is that the council consider extending our service agreement to a minimum of maybe three years so that we can plan for these programs in the future.
We could bring that to council discussion in a study session. I'm sure because there's other organizations, we have to treat everyone the same. So, I'm sure we can at least talk about that. So, I understand that. I also know that you serve more than just Latinos, is that?
Oh, yes. Or because of our constitution, I mean, our group has been attracting mostly Latinos. I mean, because we have services in Spanish, we do offer classes in Spanish, like our computer classes are taught in Spanish, but we do serve anybody that comes through our doors, ESL classes. We currently have some Somali students and Asian students too. So, we don't turn anybody away based on anything. I mean, it's pretty much anybody that comes through our doors will research services.
And, you know, the big thing is if folks want to help Mira and they want to contribute, how could they do that?
Well, there's many ways they can contribute to Mira. Obviously, money can never hurt. But we run most of our problems, not problems, programs through volunteers. So, we have our ESL class. It's run by volunteers. We actually started now a family, how do you would call it, family partnership kind of thing that it's like, we can use volunteers for childcare while the parents are taking classes. We take care of their little ones. And the idea is the little ones do learn something, that they have a little kinder or preparation or early childhood education. So, now that's gonna be coordinated with some of the parents. They'll be taking, it's like a co-op kind of setting. But we definitely can take volunteers for that too, so.
And are you still doing cultural activities as well?
Yes. Sorry?
The cultural activities.
Oh, yes.
That's been really nice. And participating in a lot of our festivals and everything's been very nice.
Yeah. And I mean, that, we started that two years ago. I'm from Spain, Barcelona. The other way around. But, you know, living here, I've been here for over 21 years. I have little ones. And the Three Kings are our Santa Claus. Those are the ones that bring our presents. And, I mean, there can be a little religious link in there, but in our case, we see it more as our Santa Claus. So, that's how we approached the event. We started two years ago, kind of, we might get five people, we might get 50, we got over 500 people.
Wow.
Obviously, we were not ready for it, but it was, it was a blast. I mean, I think people really enjoyed the event. We had toys that were donated. So, we were able to distribute tons of toys, books. This year, we did a partnership with Blue Cross, Brazil, the Two-Town Program, which is right there.
Yes.
And thanks to their help, we were also able to distribute over, I think, near 100 sleds to the families. So, the idea was to get them out, you know?
Yeah.
Brave the elements, which is a little tough for our culture.
I understand.
This is still winter for me.
Yeah, I know. Okay.
Can you give us your address and your phone number?
Yes.
It's on the piece of paper that was just...
Right. No, but I'm talking for the viewing public.
It's 7145 Harret Avenue. It's right across the high school. And we have a website, which is miraresources.org. And there you can get more information. Our phone number is 612-243-3064.
Y sabes que quiero decirles que como tenemos 20% de latinos aquí en Richfield, es buena idea que de vez en cuando apoyamos una agencia como la de ustedes porque tenemos que juntarnos todos los latinos y a ver cómo nos pueden, podemos levantarnos unos con los otros. Y ojalá algún día vamos a poder participar en esta ciudad como merecemos. Y muchas gracias a ustedes por todo su trabajo.
Yes, gracias.
Yes. Thank you for taking this on.
And we just wanna leave you with, I mean, I don't know if you can go back to the PowerPoint very quick, but that's a testimonial from one of our moms in the computer class. I can just summarize it very quick. Her name is Irene Torres. But nowadays, you know, to check your kids' progress at school, it's very important to have access to a computer, access to internet, and to know how to use it. Irene had had a code to access her kid's account for two years, but she was too afraid to touch the computer. You know, you might break it, it might explode, it's very expensive, you don't wanna touch. So, she's now doing everything through the computer. And she even organized her quinceañera, the quinceañera party for her oldest daughter through the computer. So, that's one of our little testimonies.
Yeah, that's wonderful.
Thank you very much.
Gracias.
Jim, you wanna join me for a presentation? I want to present this proclamation for Earth Day Arbor Day, which is Monday, April 22, to Jim Toppenshopper. Earth Day Arbor Day proclamation. Whereas Earth Day is celebrated nationwide on Monday, April 22, to bring awareness about the need to care for the environment. And whereas May has been designated as Arbor Month in Minnesota in order to promote the value of planting trees. And whereas Richfield Forestry Division participates in the Tree City USA program to promote efforts to preserve, maintain, and manage the health of Richfield's urban forest. And whereas Woodlake Nature Center will celebrate Earth Day and Arbor Day at their Celebrate Earth Day on Sunday, April 21, when the public is invited to Woodlake to remove invasive plant species, clean up the park, and celebrate the beauty of Woodlake in the spring. And whereas the community will join together to participate in Richfield Park Cleanup Day on Saturday, April 27, to demonstrate good stewardship of our green spaces and natural resources. And whereas the Urban Wildlife Half Marathon and 5K celebrates its 11th year of funding a longstanding environmental education program for Richfield youth, and uses only materials that are recyclable, compostable, or reusable. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the city of Richfield is committed to promoting the values of Earth Day and Arbor Day, and invites its citizens to celebrate the spirit of Earth Day and Arbor Day throughout the year by managing environmentally responsible choices in their lives, proclaimed this 9th day of April, 2013. So, would you like to say a few things about this?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, members of the council and viewing audience. My name is Jim Toppenshopper. I'm the Recreation Services Director. This is something we do every year, and I think it's very important. I wanted to draw attention to the three dates that the mayor mentioned in the proclamation. First of all, April 22 now is the official Earth Day of Richfield. And the day before that, on the 21st, at Woodlake Nature Center in the afternoon, starting at 1:00, we do a program where it's very family-friendly. We invite the public in to come in and help us kind of take care of Woodlake Nature Center, take care of the park, do some cleanup, some buckthorn removal, that sort of thing. But we do it in a fun way, in a way that draws a lot of awareness and makes you feel like you're really contributing to the environment. And so, we're happy to provide that opportunity to the, to the community. A week later, on April 27, on a Saturday, is our official Park Cleanup Day. And, you know, Richfield has 20-some parks. Every single park has a group that adopts it. And many parks have two or even three groups that adopt the one park. So, we have a very good showing of volunteers from our community. It really kind of points out how important parks are to the community. And it's not just for groups, though. I want to point out to the viewing audience that if you'd like to volunteer, maybe spruce up the park that's near you or any park in Richfield. We can take individuals as well. Call our department. Our phone number is 612-861-9385. We'd love to get you plugged in. Thank you, Mayor.
Thanks, and that's an important part of, part of Richfield is Arbor Day. And we love our trees here in Richfield. We all know that. This is a presentation in consideration of the Lakes at Lyndale Connectivity Plan. Please step up and introduce yourself and talk about the plan. Thank you very much, councilmembers, mayor. Here, I should, you know, I should have thought of this. I should have said it in Spanish too, because I can speak Spanish too. So, I should have planned ahead. John, how can I get the... Can you introduce yourself, please? Yes, I'm Anna Nelson. I'm with CEH. It's an engineering architectural firm here in Minneapolis. Excuse me. And, and thank you again for having me. I'm here to present the Lakes of Lyndale Connectivity Plan, a project we started in November of 2012, and we just completed last month. So, it was about a five-month duration project, which we started as a study, a walk tour, study assessment with some members of the planning department, planning commission. Mayor, you were there as well. And we did a tour and got feedback from the participants. And we also, as part of the, as part of the, the project, we did an intensive assessment of where we should consider making those connections. The purpose of the plan is to make specific recommendations for making, closing the gaps and providing a better visibility, better connectivity to the major destinations within the Lakes of Lyndale Connectivity Plan. Sorry, I don't... They have computer classes at Mira.
Yeah, I thought I said, it's one of the ones that are down there. There we go.
All right.
Just scroll down, right?
Yeah.
There we go. Now, I feel like I can talk about it. Just again, recapping the contents of the plan and the basics of it was to establish a connectivity plan that looked at closing the gap between the major destinations, making it more safe, more visible. Here's a synopsis of what, what we looked at as part of the, the plan. We, as part of the feedback, we made recommendations of which areas should be prioritized, as well as conducting a wayfinding signage system that could be implemented. And then as well, we did several public engagement outreach opportunities, which I was about to mention. In terms of our input, again, we started with the site tour. We had an open house in mid-January. We had about 60 to 70 people attended. We got great feedback. From there, we had a HRA project update where we discussed the feedback, what we received from the public meeting. From there, city staff conducted an online survey during the month of January and February. And after we gathered the feedback, we presented the draft of the report to the HRA in just last month. And we made adjustments and refinements to the connectivity report. And now I'm here to present the final plan version. Here's an example that we did of the graphics we presented at the open house, just presenting the concept ideas and having people the opportunity to provide us feedback, making suggestions on what their preferences in terms of recommendations and improvements of the, the plan should be. If you can see some of the, we point out how many of the prefer, we gave them green stickers as to where they would see, what improvements they would like to see first, and what were their preferred ideas. And so, we, green means, green dots mean that those were the preferred. Blue dots, we gave them the things that they didn't agree with or they disliked. And, and we only received a few of the blue dots, which is a great feedback for us, meaning that we were doing a, a good job in terms of the recommendations. As part of the study area assessment, we looked at the issues in terms of safety, making areas more visible, more safe, more accessible. And this is a representation of our starting point for recommending the connectivity plan. We look at three major strategies and categories for the connectivity plan. And it was based, first off, on accessibility and safety. The second was, was multimodal strategies, meaning that it, we would address almost the transportation from walking to public transit. And the third one was the streetscape and amenity strategies, which meant the character of the space and making, whenever we're making a connectivity recommendation, it will follow a certain standard of character and amenity standard as well. And this was the final connectivity plan that was proposed. We looked at, again, addressing the existing conditions and then making the recommendations that made the most sense in terms of making, closing the gap, making the loop. And we also looked at what improvements in terms of intersection should be pulled forward, moved forward. And in terms of public transit, looking at the existing bus transit locations and making recommendations in terms of categories from basic amenities to which one should be considered as a transit hub or a shelter space. From there, we are category, we make categories in terms of the improvements and make specific arrangements in what these improvements should be. And that was the first step in terms of prioritizing the middle, the short, middle, and long-term implementation strategies. We also look at, once we were making a recommendation in terms of accessibility, how would that be proposed? We understood that we had limitations in terms of right-of-way and existing conditions. And based on those configurations, how we can propose some of the accessibility features, meaning bike routes, making sidewalks wider, implementing wayfinding strategies, and where would they be located? Here's the, a version of the plan view of certain locations that we looked at, how it would mean to implement these recommendations. And we also, as part of the connectivity plan, we looked at precedent examples of things that could be followed as part of the recommendation of these connectivity items. And then we look at preliminary ideas for wayfinding signage and looking at primary, secondary destinations, and what type of information should be included whenever there was an opportunity for a wayfinding or directional signage. And as part of the report, we also look at different signage families and how they can be categorized from trail, from a trail marker to an actual information sign or a monument sign. And we did some renderings too, in terms of how mine looked like and some existing conditions around the Lakes of Lyndale area. And in terms of the implementation, as I mentioned before, we categorized it into three stages, what it made in logical sense, how these improvements should be moved forward. We based it on a short term, which means it's up to five years. And the short term is based on, for the most part, on a current project that is currently being proposed as the 66th visioning of the corridor. So, I, from what we understand, these ideas have been now shared with that project and with that group. So, hopefully, there's some coordination that could be done as part of the connectivity plan. The midterm, that means it's from six to 10 years. And the long term, which is a more span of over 10 years. And that's all I have. Do you have any questions? Actually, I, we're, I know we shared this with the 66th Street Visions folks. Then we'll also, Community Services, look at this and then try to, because, I mean, there's so many great ideas. I mean, it would be really nice to have, like, some of that signage kind of edit and stuff. I mean, there's a lot to choose from, and we want it to be branded all the same. So, where are we gonna, I mean, this is wonderful, wonderful work. And I know we've already looked at it at the HRA, and I'm sure we'll be getting a final report soon.
Yes, Madam Mayor and councilpeople. You know, we looked at this, and the vast majority of the work that's being proposed or the changes that are being proposed would be in the public right-of-way. That's why it did go to the Transportation Commission last week, and they did approve it. A small amount of the work could happen in public parks, in the public park system. And I think that's a great recommendation that we take that to Community Services. I'd just like to also point out that a good number of our commission members from the Community Services Commission did attend the, you know, the public meetings that were set up for this. So, they've already provided input to this.
Okay.
And, you know, in terms of implementation, for us, the next steps, you know, we're gonna be working on preparing our budgets in the, in the coming months. And we'd like to see some of these implementation steps turn into real projects that we're gonna be proposing to. And I would like to point out, too, that, you know, the impetus of this whole study was the 2012 City Council Goal Setting Session, where, you know, we were talking about a lot of the great developments that were happening at the Lakes of Lyndale area. And everybody came to the same conclusion that, you know, there are a lot of great things that are currently happening, that have happened in the past, but there isn't anything to unify them. And, you know, to that point, we're also gonna be having to go back to some of the former developers in that area and ask them how they'd like to participate. One good example is the Sculpture Garden. There are a lot of people in this community that have no idea that that's intended to be public space. They go back there, they feel like they're trespassing, that they're not supposed to be there. You know, one very small thing we can do there is work with them on, on a piece of signage for the Sculpture Garden that is the same materials, the same look as the public signage. So, it just gives somebody a mental cue that, yes, I'm supposed to be here, I can be here. So...
I guess I'd really like to see that when you guys decide what we're gonna do and everything, and what the different developers, I know Colleen's very much on this on the Lyndale Garden site.
Right. And, you know, with the Lyndale Garden Center site, this is just great timing because they are implementing a lot of what's coming out of the study.
And right behind City Bella there is a beautiful park, and people don't...
And right behind City Bella there is a beautiful park, and people don't ever go there. I go there and sit, there's nobody there, and they have a beautiful garden, and nobody ever goes back there. It's just, it's fabulous.
Yeah.
What a jewel.
You know, we will be coming back with specific projects based on this.
Okay. And it's nice to see what the branding looks like, you know, the Richfield branding for us, because I'm kind of excited about being able to show those gateways off. I think we all are.
And they are great examples also within town of just looking at different family of wayfinding signage that could be a good precedent to what it could happen as Richfield. Another thing that we looked at as part of this study assessment is, you know, we did focus on the Lakes of Lindale area, but we also did kind of step back and say, you know, this could be the first point of, or a precedent project for looking at the other major destinations within Richfield.
Taft, I think the Taft is the work that we're gonna be doing there.
So, you know, something, it's a program that could be expanded throughout the city of Richfield and looking at making a connection to the Historical Center and things like that. And I think that it will be.
We can develop some great guidelines here. This is great work.
And again, the timing is perfect. We're talking about, you know, doing some more work as a community in terms of marketing ourselves. So that will come out of this. I think later on in tonight's agenda, you're gonna be hearing about gateways and planning for, and designing gateways, and that all ties in with this as well. So the timing is just perfect.
Mm-hmm. Great. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you for your presentation.
Next time, Spanish.
Okay, all right. There you go. Any other questions, Council? Council, this is Council Discussion. Excuse me, Councilmember Elliott, I'll start with you.
Madam Mayor, before we leave that item, you, I think the action that we're seeking here.
Oh, do we need an approval?
Yeah, you do need approval.
Okay.
I will move that we approve the connectivity report.
The plan.
Plan.
A second. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Okay, Council Discussion.
Your Honor, I, with all candor, I'm in semi-hibernation pending the upcoming snowstorm, and I probably won't awake till Saturday, so I really don't have anything tonight.
Okay, all right. Garcia.
Thank you, Mayor. I think Councilmember FitzHenry's gonna put this up on the screen, but this is information and invitation for the, that the Richfield Public Schools are holding their 2013 Community Wellness Expo in its Go Lean and Go Green. That will be held Saturday, April the 13th, at the Richfield High School, and it starts at 9:00 a.m. and it will end at noon. Some of the highlights include one-mile fitness run and walk, and that begins at 9:00 o'clock, and that's gonna include the school staff and the Richfield High School Boys and Girls' Track Teams. And hopefully, that you will join them and maybe have some good fun and try to win. And then the second thing is over forty interactive health and wellness-related demonstration and vendors. And that's, that's, you know, the more it's done, you should see the folks that gather around, around that, because it's just so worthwhile and so interesting. The other thing is the American Red Cross Blood Drive. And if you would like to donate, please visit www redcross.org. Make donation and schedule an appointment. I do believe that you don't really need an appointment if you get there, and hopefully, the lines are not too long. The other thing is a book swap, library with free library books for kids. These are gently-used books, and you can enjoy them and then take them home. Finally, the school project displays kids choir performance, kids' displays, and then kids' choir performance and a kid's zone. So that's gonna include finger, face painting, bouncy jumper, and an interactive obstacle course. So bring your whole family. This is really a family event and dress, so that you're able to join and participate in the fun events that are taking place. This is sponsored by the Richfield Public Schools and Community Education and the Richfield Bloomington Credit Union, and I hope you will certainly take advantage of this fun event. Thank you.
That's great. You know, I've been there, a lot of chiropractors come there, and we also have some of the schools that come there that practice massage. So if you wanna come out and try that and you've never done it before, they actually have the chairs there, you know, and they talk to you about what that will do to help your body and to make you feel better. There's a lot of really great things. They'll take your blood pressure there, and a lot of interactive learning about nutrition. It was a really insightful program. I think it sure will be this year, too.
And everybody likes those freebies.
Councilmembers, Sandal, do you?
Yes, I do. Yes, thank you.
That's what you get for sitting so close.
So you took that in your class.
Okay. What's on the screen right now is the Commuter Challenge, and that is sponsored by the I-494 Corridor Commission and their, let's see, what do they call it? It's the Commuter Challenge, 494 Corridor. And if you look at the ad, it says you can try it once. You don't have to dedicate hours of doing things differently. All they're asking you to do is to go online, sign up at mycommuterchallenge.org/commuterservices. And what you're agreeing to do is to try an alternative method of getting to work. It includes, you could take the bus, or the train, or the bicycle, carpool, walk, you could telework or vanpool, instead of driving alone in your car. And they have wonderful prizes, Visa gift cards, $500, $500 at the Apple Store. And what they're trying to do is to encourage people to try alternative ways as opposed to driving alone in your car. And this particular organization, which Richfield is one of the sponsors for, Five Cities, support the I-494 Corridor Group. And we're looking at how do we make it easy for people to drive on the freeways? And one of the ways we do that is to encourage people to try alternative modes, to get some of the cars off the freeways, or to car share, to vanpool, to try working in a carpool. So that's one opportunity, if you're interested. Again, it would be, go to mycommuterchallenge.org and then slash commuterservices and agree to try, one day, to try an alternative way to get to work. And I have done that, and I only work two blocks from home, so I have volunteered to walk.
Yeah.
So, but I've also biked. And so it's a good way to figure out how you would get there. The other thing is their website will also give you opportunities to learn what are good, safe bicycle routes, if you wanna try getting someplace. And you can give them, and they will get you a route, so it's worth trying. The second thing, and that is good from now till June 30th. The second thing I wanted to bring to your attention is a local concert, and I think of this as part of our Arts in Richfield. We have lots of arts, including musical. And there's going to be a concert at, this will be at St. Richards Catholic Church. Peter Aronstein, I went to see his performance last year, and it was just delightful. He's wonderful. And you can hear works by Chopin, Scarlatti, Schumann, and Aronstein himself. So that's available. If you're interested, it's a donation only, there's no admission fee. Welcome to come, and we hope you might join us. That will be Sunday, April 28th, 2013, at 7:00.
Well, lots of good things happening around here.
Yeah.
Councilmember FitzHenry.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I personally want to thank Steve Devich and Pam Demetranko. We've had some stuff going on with the Noise Oversight Committee. You may see some stuff in the paper, but assured, Richfield's staying on top of it. We're working on it, so we'll see if things still move forward. But I wanted to thank them personally for catching a lot of items that came up recently in the legislature. The other thing is, don't forget about parking in the street. I would suggest that those folks think about moving your cars off the street, because this will be a very wet, heavy snow.
Yeah.
And once the snow comes, it'll be difficult to get your cars off. So think about it now, get them off the street net. And I know there are people that have gone on vacation, so if you know people that have parked their car on the street because they're gone for the weekend or for the week, I'd encourage, be a good neighbor, knock on their door, find out if there's a way they can get that car off the street. Or when they come home, they'll find it in an impound lot. So I just reminded people to do their duty and get off the street.
And then finally, I'd just like to say, we had a study session right before this regarding some more redevelopment, and that is with the Richfield Bloomington Honda Store and Lometries. And they'll be doing, doing a huge upscale, nice showroom and everything. And we went through some of the externalities of just looking at sketches and making sure that things worked for the neighbors and the neighborhood and everything. But this, again, this is some of the staff's work, that we really wanna thank them for the hard work that they've done on this. But this is a great new project that's coming in Richfield, and we continue to have good projects. And one of the things that they said was how easy it was to work with our staff here in Richfield. And of course, you know, being as a councilmember, that's wonderful to hear. We always like to hear that. And, you know, that hopefully encourages other really great developers to come to town and know that we're easy to work with, and we wanna listen to your projects. So I wanna thank the staff. Councilmember Garcia?
I also wanted to acknowledge that we have a celebrity in our audience, and this is Emily Day, our Richfield Person Extraordinaire. She's, you know.
The matriarch of the town.
She's, she's someone that everyone knows and loves, and I've always confessed that she, that she is my favorite Richfield resident.
That's good to see you, Emily. Thank you for coming. Any other discussion items, Council? At this time, I'd ask Council approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. This is Council's agenda. Consent calendar, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. For the viewing audience, the consent calendar contains several separate items which are acted upon by the City Council in one motion. Once the City Council approves the consent calendar, all the individual items and the recommendations will also have been approved, and no further action on those items will be necessary. Tonight, there's only four items on the consent calendar, beginning with consideration of approval of hiring Mankey Brothers Outdoor Incorporated to provide landscape maintenance for the following areas: LHN Maintenance District, 77th Street Maintenance District, and the 35W-66th Street Bridge Area. Item B is consideration of approval of a resolution authorizing the city manager to approve addenda to purchase agreements for the Richfield Parkway Improvement Project. Item C, consideration of approval of a resolution granting a subdivision waiver for 7340 Clinton Avenue. And finally, item D, consideration of approval of a request for a temporary on-sale intoxicating liquor license for Blessed Trinity Catholic School at 6720 Nicollet Avenue for their Fiesta scheduled to be held on April 28th, 2013. And that concludes tonight's consent calendar.
Council, any questions or discussion? I'll move the consent calendar.
Second.
All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Consent calendar. Councilmember Elliott, you have the...
Thank you, Your Honor. This item for consideration involves a public hearing and second reading of a transitory ordinance for the Taft Lake Water Quality Improvement Project and resolution for summary publication. Consistent with City Council direction, the capital improvement plan and the city's comprehensive plan, staff is working towards the completion of the Taft Lake Water Quality Improvement Project. This project also includes construction of the Richfield Parkway North Connection and improvements at Veterans Park. The City Council has approved the 25 mile-per-hour curve alternative as the future alignment for the Richfield Parkway North Connection between 17th and Bloomington Avenues. The North Connection is a replacement roadway for the Taft Lake Frontage Road and Old Cedar Avenue. This project is scheduled to begin construction this summer. On March 12th, 2013, Council approved the first reading of this ordinance and set the public hearing for April 9th, 2013. Pursuant to Section 8.05 of the City Charter, notice of the public hearing was published twice in the Sun Current within 14 days prior to the hearing. Publication dates were on March 28th, 2013, and April 4th, 2013. Couple additional items. Pursuant to Section 804 of the City Charter, the project will require approval by transitory ordinance. This approval is required when a capital improvement project is on city-owned property and the estimated cost exceeds $500,000, or the engineering costs exceed $75,000. Financial items include $2.7, $2,700,000 of the project costs will be funded by the Minnehaha Creek Watershed District via city general obligation bonds. The remaining costs of the project will be funded by city municipal state aid funds and city utility funds. The right-of-way costs are estimated at $620,000 to be paid for using municipal state aid funds. Environmental considerations that the TLWQI project includes various elements to improve the stormwater quality of Legion and Taft Lakes, along with habitat enhancement. With that being said, Your Honor, this calls for a public hearing, so...
The public hearing is open. Would anyone like to come forward to speak on this issue? Anyone at all would like to come forward?
Second.
All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Public hearing is closed. Councilmember?
Yes, Your Honor. At this time, I would move to conduct and close the public hearing and by motion, approve the second reading of a transitory ordinance for the Taft Lake Quarter Quality Improvement Project, authorizing engineering services at an estimated cost of $225,000, and construction at an estimated cost of $3 million. Number two, approve resolution for summary publication of the transitory ordinance.
A second. Any other discussion?
If I may, I know that Mike Esling had a huge hand in this whole project, and if there's any comments you'd like to make, Mike, in regards to seeing this to close to closure and moving forward, I know that it's been kind of an exciting project for the last year, 18 months.
No, I just say this is a procedural matter so that we can make the charter requirements.
Okay.
I'm excited to see this. I've worked with this script, and great working with you, Councilmember.
Right.
And thank you for the great direction. It's been wonderful. It's nice to see this happen. Okay? All those in favor signify by aye.
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 Opposed? Councilmember Sandal, you have the...
I do. Number nine. This is a consideration of the creation of a project task force for the purposes of working with MINDOT and on the I-35W and Crosstown Gateway Project. And this matter came before the Transportation Commission at their last meeting. And where it came out of was when the Crosstown and 35W, the whole commons area was done. MINDOT apparently budgeted about half a million dollars for gateways to identify some of the exits along this corridor. And, you know, they, they turned up, turned Minneapolis and Richfield upside down and removed housing and so forth. And this is kind of a way of giving back, I think, to both communities. And this will include landscaping along noise walls and retaining walls that MINDOT is now finishing. And then the gateway features would be specific items at each of the entrances into and out of our various exit and entrance ramps along the corridor that was changed. So in Richfield, it includes 66th Street and 35W, Penn Avenue and Crosstown, Lindale Avenue and Crosstown, Nicollet Avenue and Crosstown, and then the Portland Avenue and Crosstown. And then there's other ones in Minneapolis that are the various exits, including Diamond Lake, 60th, 50th, 46th, and all the way to 42nd Street. And so the purpose for MINDOT, from their perspective, is to create artistic landscape elements that will showcase unique characteristics of the neighborhood connections along I-35W and Crosstown in both Minneapolis and Richfield. And MINDOT is stressing public involvement, and they want to design the gateways to be influenced by the residents of the cities involved, and they're proposing a large amount of public involvement to do that. And each city is very different, and this was discussed at the, at the Transportation Commission meeting. And Minneapolis has a number, because it's such a large city, they have a lot of sub-neighborhood groups. They have, you know, the Diamond Lake Neighborhood and the Phillips Neighborhood and all the different neighborhood groups. And Richfield is relatively small in comparison to Minneapolis, and we don't. But we do have many city commissions that form part of the same type of public input process, because they're all Richfield residents or people that are heavily involved in Richfield that serve on those commissions. And so we suggested to MINDOT at the Transportation Meeting that our process needs to be different from Minneapolis, because we're different. We have a different setup here than Minneapolis does. And MINDOT was amenable to that. And so at the Transportation Commission, it was discussed what would be the best setup at this point to try and help design the gateway for, the ones that affect Richfield. And so the commission discussed it and made the following recommendations. They recommended that the City Council create a project task force with the intent of working with MINDOT on the planning of all these design elements and placement of the gateways within Richfield. And the task force would report directly to the City Council. And the recommendation from the Transportation Commission was that it would be made up of representatives from, but not limited to, the following: two planning commission members, two transportation commission members, two members from the Community Services Commission, two members from the Arts Commission, and then staff liaisons from each of those commissions, two members from the Chamber of Commerce, and it was also suggested that one or two members from Penn Central of Richfield be included in that process. And... And they would be considering many key issues, including design elements, placement of the monuments, or whether it's a monument or not, as opposed to just landscaping, budget, and does the city wish to include or contribute any additional funds that might improve even further these particular gateway entrances, and then maintenance costs and requirements. So that, and that person then would, that committee, if that's what the City Council chooses to do, would be supported by Liz Finnegan, the Civil Engineer in the Public Works Department. So that's the recommendation from the Transportation Commission. And I'm gonna put it on the table by approving that we approve this creation of a Crosstown Gateway Project Task Force as recommended by the Transportation Commission.
Second.
Okay. I do have one question, just in thinking about all this, and I know that I've called city staff before. When they talk about the maintenance and everything, is it eventually gonna be that we are going to maintain this? Or who's gonna maintain it?
Mayor, members of the council, certainly MINDOT won't, and if anybody will.
Well, that's my thought. That is my thought, indeed.
If anybody will, it will be city staff. So I think certainly we'll be looking for some low-maintenance kinds of things. Unless the staff directs otherwise, I mean, we certainly, I mean, council directs otherwise. We could.
We like low maintenance, too. And I think, you know, scape set or, you know, drought tolerant and those kinds of things, but look very nice would be great.
I'm just wondering, I don't know, I mean, it's early in the planning stage, and I don't know where they're gonna be relative to traffic and everything else, but is it against the grain to suggest that the commissions or Penn Central, the people that are gonna be working on it, can do like, they adopt highways and contribute to the maintenance of it? If it's.
That was something I was gonna ask next, but I agree with that. I wonder if we could do that, like Jim was just here and talked about, adopt a park, maybe they could adopt a, and that would be a much smaller swath of land to have to.
Absolutely. I'll carry these thoughts to this commission.
Yeah, well, they'll be deciding. I'm sure they'll bring it to us.
It just occurred to me, we do have the Richfield Garden Club, and maybe someone from that group might be included.
I agree. We should look at them, too, and maybe invite to have one of them in there. We have some master gardeners in town, too. It would be nice to have some of them come here, because they would know a lot about some of the newer native plants that are coming around, and it would be very beautiful. I mean, too, and I'm hoping, too, with our Arts Commissions and other commissions, excuse me, my voice is so bad tonight, that we could get some cultural diversity with whatever we do that really displays Richfield and who we are, especially farm to future. You know, I keep thinking about that from our Centennial Celebration, we were a farming community. Maybe we was to plant some edible gardens or some stocks of corn, be kind of, show what we are. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor signify by aye.
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 Aye. Thank you. City Manager, you have a report.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, I'm gonna ask Mike Isling to make just a very brief presentation or information presentation on a bill that's proceeding through the legislature.
Sure. Mayor, members of the council, you received a council memo number 26 that identified a street improvement districts that are working their way through the legislature. This legislation has been introduced every year for 20 years, and this is, probably it's advancing further than it has for a long, long time. And so I wanted to make sure that the council was aware of that in case that you're contacted by any representatives and senators. And although we did not have a specific position endorsing this year, we have in the past, and so because it has come to the surface, again, I wanted to make sure that the council was aware of it, and that with your permission, the staff will express the city's support for this legislation.
Yeah, and the regional council mayors have supported it.
I would certainly put that in the form of a motion. I'd say we oughta go on record supporting it.
Yeah, I think so.
So the one thing that this legislation does, it enables the city to do this. The city doesn't have to.
That is correct.
To do it. And that's the most important part of it.
Nice tool.
Yes.
Because at least we could use all the options that we have.
That's right.
And I wanna thank staff, too. There's been an awful lot of work going on in the legislation. I've gotten a lot of calls and lots of conversations back and forth, and I've been making lots of calls, and even, we're gonna be making some visits down to the legislature. So because of some of the things that are going on that highly impact Richfield, but I wanna thank staff, too, because they're on top of it, and so am I. And I've called on a few councilmembers also to make some calls and help out. Thank you. I really appreciate that. When they hear from more than one voice, that's always better.
So that is a motion. I've moved that we support it. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor signify by aye.
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 We have claims and payroll.